Good evening, no, not good evening, it's good afternoon. Great start for the day. These are the candidates here vying for your first preference vote in the Arataki ward. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. Good evening, good afternoon. Gee, I'm stuck in that, stuck in that mode today. Good aft-, yeah, good afternoon and welcome to today's Arataki ward. It's in the ballot show here live from the Papamoa Community Centre. We have got these fantastic candidates here who are vying over there. We've got to get you to put your posters up. So can we get the posters on front of the stages and then we'll do, start doing the big reveal? This is one of the things that come down here. So let's kick off, we've got camera one going properly now. We've got the signal going through. Okay, go on. Okay, so let's kick off from staying from me, get the candidates, drop, drop the poster and introduce who you are. And the microphone does help.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Jerome Vanderbeek. I live in the Arataki ward, born in the Waikato, moved here in the eighties. I think that makes me a lot.
Okay, next over.
Good afternoon.
Microphone helps. Otherwise those at home are just gonna say.
Yeah, hi, I'm Rick Kurak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jane Bourne.
Hi, I'm Theresa Killian.
Oh, I'm Anthony Goddard.
Good afternoon, I'm Harris Williams.
Good afternoon, I'm one of four councillors that live in Arataki. My name's Adrian Pearce.
Hi, I'm Kim Renshaw.
And these are your candidates who have put their feet to the fire for the It's in the Ballot Show. So now I just have to get my run sheet out. This will tell me what my next step is. Let's get the candidates' opening statements. And this one will be however they appear on the council's website. Start off with Sarah Jane, because I think your last name starts with B.
The path to a fully elected council is paved with challenges that require strong collaborative leadership and experienced governance. I bring to the table not just my qualifications as an RMA hearings commissioner, but also my qualifications and experience in business, finance and marketing. As the only candidate who is a current elected member in local government, I am intimately familiar with the very latest developments, the financial pressure and regulatory changes our council and communities face. Tonight I stand before you not just as a candidate, but as a passionate advocate for our community and its future.
Okay, next up, Rick.
Hello, Rick Kurak. I'm standing in the Arataki ward. I live in Bay Fair, which is just outside the ward. But I'm an experienced councillor, but I was not part of the group that was stood down by the minister. That wasn't unfortunate, but yeah, we move on from that. So I'm happy to work cooperatively with whatever group that democracy delivers. We all have differing views and opinions, but we need to accept those and move forward to make the city what we all hope it will be. The number one issue for me is rates affordability. A recent Kiwibank survey, the findings were out last week, I think. One in three, one in three people don't have $500 to pay for something which comes up unexpectedly. That is frightening. Two in three people are struggling to put money aside. It's actually unbelievable what that was finding. So it's due to the cost of living, particularly these days. Everyday costs such as rent, mortgage, food. So whether you rent or own, rates is a big bill to pay.
God, that's definitely coming up a bit up there. Anthony.
Kia ora guys, I'm Anthony Goddard.
Just hold the mic a bit closer.
Is that better?
Yeah.
But let's get into it. Okay, I'm, you know, I'm happy to announce my candidacy for the, for the mayor of Toorong and also for Arataki councillor. Look, as a long time resident here, I'm deeply rooted in the community. I've witnessed both its growth and its challenges firsthand. And my gosh, honestly, I'm just here to just make this a lot, have a lot easier than what it is. So it's me.
Okay, next up, Adrian.
Good afternoon. As I said previously, I'm one of four candidates who live in Arataki. I am able to start, if I'm lucky enough, to be chosen by the Arataki ward. I'm able to start immediately and I do see this role as a full-time job. It is an absolute transition period. We're coming back to democracy. 10 new people will be at that table and they're gonna have a big catch-up job to do. So it's really important that you consider that as voters, who you're going to vote for. So I'm asking Arataki to give me their number one vote. Thank you.
Okay, Theresa.
Hi, I'm Theresa Killian. I live a few blocks on the other side of Bay Fair, just outside the ward. And I work full-time at the Port of Toorong. I've had two businesses and worked in senior management across aviation, logistics and construction. I've learnt these from the ground up. I was part of the Link Sav Panel, working to get our street reopened, which we achieved. My vision for Toorong is to ensure our children and their children live in the most beautiful small city in New Zealand. Not only do we provide the employment, housing, infrastructure and roading, but we make sure there are places for them to go to. Amenities, destinations, places to see, things to do. There's no point in having a beautiful road that takes you nowhere. But in order to do that, we will require a fresh, new outlook on council. A council that is forward-thinking, nimble, collaborative and above all respectful. I would like to help form that council and I plan to work full-time as a councillor if elected. Theresa Killian for Arataki, thank you.
Okay, next up, Kim.
Kia ora everyone, I'm Kim Renshaw and I'm committed to building the brightest future possible. All people deserve to feel they've got a bright future. And this starts with the council being a team of relatable and visible and accountable and engaged individuals who reflect the diversity of our community. As a mother, I care deeply about the future for my children, your children, everyone's children and also for our environment. I want us to have clean air, safe, clean water and plenty of trees to climb. I bring over 20 years commercial governance experience and I love the process of group decision-making through consensus building. And I'm mostly passionate about building mobilisation for participation in this election and for our community to participate in our local government and our democracy. So I'm Kim Renshaw, thanks very much.
And it's Jerome, I've said it correct? Okay, no, it's good, no, it's always worried when, yeah, when you look at, huh?
Look, if it's close and it's good news, it's definitely me. Hi, my name is Jerome Vanderbeek. As I said earlier, I am one of the four who live within the ward. I don't live elsewhere, even if it is very close. I'm your neighbour, I live here. I see the role as two parts. One, obviously the overall governance of the city. And the second part is representing my neighbour and the needs of the Arataki people. So there's two hats here, right? I have a background quite diverse, mechanical engineering. I've owned my own businesses, I've been a sales engineer. I've done some study in marketing after I did my engineering qualifications. I ask you to judge me on me as a whole. Do me a favour, look at the whole picture of who I am, not just the qualifications. Yeah, I've got a few of those. Look at me as the whole picture, right? Number one issue, you have to be able to afford to live here. Simple, it doesn't matter how clear and glossy and bright things are. Vanderbeek, vote one.
Okay, next up, Andrea.
Hi everyone, I'm Andrew Webster. And I'm standing in the Arataki ward. I believe I'm the right person. This is the right time and this is the right place for me to be standing. I'm the right person because I'm from here. I've lived here all of my life and my connections are throughout the community. I believe I'm the right person because I'm solutions-focused. I've got a lot of experience in that space, dealing with all sorts of issues and helping communities to come to solutions that work for them. And I'm an expert in governance. I've spent the last five years giving advice and guidance to all schools, all principals, all boards across our country around all the matters that they will deal with in governance and employment. This is the right place for me because of my longstanding connections and because of my ongoing connection with the community. I am involved, I have been involved and I'm still involved. I have extensive local knowledge and I'm proud to represent Arataki. I've represented my partners and I'd like to represent Arataki.
Okay, next up, Harris.
Kia ora everyone, my name's Harris Williams and I represent Toorong as next generation of emerging young leaders. I believe it's time for change and we desperately need some fresh faces at the table. And I really believe we need some young voices at the table. I'm here to represent Arataki with pride and passion. I want to go above and beyond for our community. And most importantly, I want to listen to your community voice, because your voice matters. Please vote Harris Williams for Arataki and yeah, I'm looking forward to starting the show. Thank you.
And just before we proceed, do we have a Mike Williams here? I believe, we don't know what his situation is. Now, I do have an address from one of our broadcasting partnerships. Hey Paul, can you get up to speed what's happening with this live stream's about? So Paul Barlow has, has joined us in a broadcasting partnership arrangement. So more voters can find out who's standing in the Toorong City Council Special Local Bodies as he also agrees we need to sit down there and get as many voices out as many channels as possible. So I hope that brings you up to speed with what this live stream's about. There's also will be another two today, thanks to Paul's cross-posting partnership that we've brought up. Now, let's get to the part I always love, the questions we think you'll be asking after watching today's show. Question number one, which local company will get rich selling carpets and bags? Will any of the candidates be brave enough to take the shopping centre away from the motorway? And that would be a determination depending what you class as motorway. And will Bay Park Stadium ever get to see an international level sports game? Considering, you know, it's in the ward, is it in the ward? It is the ward. I know, these boundaries confuse me. Yeah, yeah. So, so those are the questions we think you'll be asking after watching this show. Okay, now we've got our last, was it our random organiser list here? And Jerome, you get to go up first. What box number, oh, actually, before I go, I need to introduce Nick. Welcome again, this is what he was, when you done last night's show and you've, yeah, we know what's happened.
Yep, hey Sam, how's it going?
Good, good, good. You getting ready for four o'clock?
Oh, always ready.
The seat's warm.
Good, good, keep it.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, okay, Jerome, what box number would you like Nick to get?
Box seven please.
Oh, good, another prime number.
I'm the seventh child, I'm the seventh child, I'm the seventh child.
God, that seems awkward. It's quite an interesting number.
All right, R for Romeo. What qualifications do you hold that would qualify you for councillor? And what skills have you got that ensure you will perform well as a councillor?
I think I really covered that in my intro. If we deal with the skills or the qualifications. I left school and I qualified as a diesel engineer. Following that, I went full-time study doing some marketing and business papers. I've worked in sales engineer, I've been sales, I've done managerial roles. I've had a couple of businesses of my own. It's the whole package you're looking at. I've also been the chair of large corporate body organisations, which was fraught with disappointment due to the developers not finishing the development. Our gated community didn't even have gates. And pragmatism was needed to get everybody on forward for a solution. We all knew who should be paying for it, but you had to get everybody to understand what the pragmatic solution is. I know how to work with people. And that's it.
Okay, Anthony, what box number? Oh, another unlucky prime number. I don't know, has Health Speech recently done a special there? Because don't they always do something on Friday the 13th? I forgot to give them to you, but yes, you do have that and I'll go and grab them from my box.
All right, we have N for November. Do you support a museum for Toorong City?
Well, yes, yes, I do support the establishment of a museum for Toorong City. I love natural history and a museum, this is what we're missing. You know, it would play a crucial role in preserving and showcasing the rich cultural heritage and stories of Toorong and its surrounding regions. It would provide residents and visitors opportunity to learn about our local history and celebrate our diverse community, foster a deeper appreciation for our heritage and just be an all-round good place to go. Everyone does enjoy a museum, I don't find anyone who doesn't enjoy a museum. A museum can also serve as an educational hub, like we're in the library right here. People are coming in, using the space. You know, we could offer exhibitions, programmes and events to enrich the culture and intellectual life of our city. So yes, I do support a museum. Cheers.
And yes, been having a bit of fun and while the button cards have made, haven't quite made their way down the pile to all the candidates, we've already got a button from Jerome. Yes, go for it, one minute.
I absolutely love the idea of a museum, but not if I can't afford to live here. The ability to afford where we live is first. That is right on the end of the wishlist. Let's focus on the needs and make sure we can afford to live here. And when we can do that, let's see about a museum.
Okay, next up, Rick, and I hope those cards are now getting their way down.
Differ and button, what's the difference?
So button means you, button your answer to someone else's question after they've finished. Differ means you, you don't want to answer the question, you give it to another candidate.
F for foxtrot. Yes or no, do you support the establishment of Maori wards? Do you support the Treaty of Waitangi? Why?
Unfortunately, the answer that would get the most votes would be no. But in my experience on council, Maori wards are helpful because we get a voice into discussions that otherwise wouldn't be there. I'm thinking of the regional council, they've had a Maori ward member and placed for many years. And 2002. And I recall many times that it was quite helpful. It is only one member of 10. It's not like we are losing a non-Maori member, we're gaining an extra one. So I think in terms of the value that a Maori member can add, in principle, I do support it. I know the central government is looking at some referendum and we all know the result of that. So it's unfortunate that they've taken that path, but that's the way politics is in our century of social media and what that delivers to people here.
Okay, was it, next up? Oh, yes, we've got a button. That's all right, that's all right.
Hi, Andrew Webster. I would like an opportunity to answer this question.
Just hold up microphone a bit closer.
Thank you. I do support the establishment of Maori wards, but more importantly to me is ensuring that whoever is in a ward as a representative is the best person, brings the most skill that can make the best difference. So while a Maori ward is certainly something I must and do support, I further support the assurance of the right people in those spaces to deliver for our community.
Okay, next up, Theresa. So again, box 11 for those at home who did not hear.
Sorry, box 11.
L for Lima. Do you support the proposed CBD stadium?
Big ticket item. Okay, at this stage, I cannot see any public appetite for this and the money is probably best spent elsewhere on infrastructure first of all. Several things, not just the cost. I don't believe the business model is fit for purpose. I think it's too small, not covered. Relocating existing clubs, that's one $21 million. Other facilities could be upgraded using that money. And not to mention the huge disruption during the building on this busy road. We've already just finished the Cameron Road saga, so I don't think there's any appetite for it and I'm actually not a fan of that.
Okay, next up, Kim. And for those at home, box number two.
A for Alpha. What political, what political party are you linked to?
I am linked to no political party.
Okay, Harris, what box number?
Can we go box number 17 please?
And that's also another prime number.
V for Victor. With a CBD that needs revitalising and a housing crisis, supply and affordability wise, how are cost savings and rate changes going to contribute to this?
So firstly, the cost savings, I believe this will result from council defining their role. In my opinion, council's role needs to be as urban planner and policymaker and should collaborate and support private sector investment, i.e. to make resource consent less erroneous. Rate changes will enable council to invest in better strategies to bring the community back to the CBD, i.e. more engagement and street entertainment for better public and then better public and private access with buses and parking to enable great spots like the Strand and our waterfront to be accessed effectively.
Okay, Sarah Jane, what box number?
Box number four please.
Q for Quebec. Shortly, Toorong City councillors will be asked to approve a proposal for the installation of rainbow street art in the CBD. The aim of the project is to celebrate our Rainbow community, acknowledge our wider diversity and improve the vibrancy of our CBD. Would you vote in favour of the proposal and if not, why not?
I would not vote in favour of a rainbow crossing. I see it as simply a sign of tokenism. I don't think it's a meaningful gesture to the Rainbow community at all. I think there are a lot better ways that we could bring inclusion for the Rainbow community into Toorong.
Okay, Andrea.
D for Delta. The most vibrant and successful cities on earth have grown societally and economically in part through abandoning concepts of homogenous societies and embracing the diversity of our populations. Aotearoa, New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. How would you grow Toorong amount through actively celebrating all peoples who call our city home?
Thank you. I would grow Toorong and Wurundjeri through actively celebrating all people who call our city home by role modelling, inclusion, by supporting multicultural events, by reflecting cultures of all designations and our environment and allocating appropriate resources to support that to happen.
Okay, next up, Adrian.
Box number 21, thanks.
And isn't that the age when you get asked, you mean to say from now on, what's your turn?
No.
Z for zebra. What will you do to help tackle substance abuse and support those affected in our community?
Now, this is an interesting question and one thing I've been thinking about while everyone's answering their questions. You know, we're going to a table of total of 10 people. So anybody making promises today, they're going to get one vote at that table on that question. And I think this happens a lot with local and central government. Most of us here, all of us here will be taxpayers and rate payers. So whose job is what? And I see substance abuse, the support of people who need help in that arena is a central government job. It's not a local council job. I mean, we will know about sectors of our community, of course we will. And we will be looking at how do we access central government assistance when we have a problem? And there are a lot of towns throughout the country who have a huge, you know, meth problem. It was kind of good to see the coalition government donating 24 million to Gun Boot Friday. You know, same, same. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that round. So we now have a new list. Kim, you get to go up first. I'll just check my sheet. Which number was it on the sheet? Because I do know there's, I think we, there may have been an update when it went for a verification process. Was it one, two or three?
Oh, they're different, yeah.
I was prepared for the other question. Okay, great. Box number, what do they go up to?
28.
Box number 18 please.
Box Alpha Alpha. What will you do to improve the relationship between the police and the young people in our community?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's, it's really important that our young people can trust our police and that our police have got a working relationship with our young people. I think that they need to work together, but also that our young people actually feel safe in our community. I was just talking with a friend yesterday about her young person who's 16, who asked, mum, do you think if I was feeling unsafe down the mountain and it was like the evening and I couldn't get a ride home and I didn't know how to get home and I was worried, do you think that the police would come and pick me up and, and give me a ride? And, and anyway, they had a conversation about what would be the likelihood and the path to get home.
But I think that's a really, really hopeful point that someone who's 16 is thinking that the police, you know, can look after her and take care of her and potentially get her home. So there'll be many pathways for our local government to build relationships between the regulator, the different law enforcers and all of those parts of our society and vulnerable communities and also our young people. So there's certainly work to do.
Okay, Sarah Jane, what box number?
Box number one, please.
And just a reminder, that's the first number you've got to put down on your ballot paper when you start your ranking.
G for Golf. Given the well-established evidence globally and within New Zealand that congestion is increased when more and bigger roads are built and also that congestion is bad for the economy, including wages, what policies would you support to improve the mobility of residents around Taronga City?
So some of the most successful cities in the world attribute part of that success to having reliable and accessible transport. So Taronga City Council needs to be working with Bay of Plenty Regional Council to improve our public transport network to avoid that congestion, absolutely.
We have a button from Theresa.
Not too much to say, but this is about crime, but it is about transport as well. A lot of the people that I'm talking to in the area are telling me that they will not let their children take the bus to school. Now, everyone knows that the school run or in the school holidays, that the traffic decreases nearly 50%. So let's fix, if we could fix somehow the crime, like she was saying, extra surveillance, bus stops that are safer, then we will actually also help fix part of the transport problem. So just to add to that.
It's amazing what still hasn't changed because I remember that was the big thing about Welcome Bay. School holidays, basically you got to the city 15 minutes quicker than during non-school holidays. And I think that was before they put in that underpass tunnel film that I'm still yet to have driven through, that's been there for years. Yeah, okay. Harris, what box number? Sorry, you want? Yep, jump in.
Yeah, so there is evidence to suggest the whole induced demand thing, right? We make more availability on our roads. They do get swallowed up by more cars, people will drive more. And it's actually the same with energy consumption. So when we produce more energy, we lower the cost, people will use more energy as well. And that's known as Jevons paradox, it's the same phenomenon. But we do have people in our city that need to drive. Our city has built a backbone of construction and tradies and they need to make their way around the city. They're actually costing people more money by being stuck in our traffic. My partner's a builder, so I'm well familiar with this problem that we have. We've got emergency services and also many sectors of our, or people within our community that need to drive for various reasons, whether they are mobility impaired or parents with children, that sort of thing. But there are some of us who don't, we don't need to drive. We need to make it easier, have a master plan for transport across our city, which includes a shift to a different mode we're able, when we're able to. So it does mean an interconnected network. It does mean more cycling and walking and it does mean buses and maybe ferries and also rail. But we need to work together with the other councils that surround us and get that master plan happening. So, thank you.
Okay, Harris.
Alrighty, yeah, can we go box number five, please?
H for Hotel. Do you support greater levels of intensification and the loosening of height restrictions in central areas? Like that recently seen in the amended Wellington district plan?
I also just like to warn you some insider knowledge, that's off to the High Court as well. Just to let you know, because I know the organisation taking it to the High Court.
So are we talking about Wellington or did you mean?
No, that's the Wellington issue, just to let you know. Because Wellington City Council, the commissioner said one thing, the council said, "We know better." So then they went and went up to there and said to the Minister of Housing, "Can you please sign it off? We don't agree with the commissioners," which means you have to get a minister approval. And what's just happened last week, there's a group of people out there because they've ignored the commissioners who put in all this work and are taking it to High Court saying it's, so that's just a warn, that is something that is happening in Wellington. And I'm not sure if that's public knowledge yet, but it might have been announced down, it's in the ballot. Just to warn on that one, that is getting off to the High Court.
No worries.
Sorry, that's just some insider information though. I do know from being in there and I'm in the email chain, it's taking it to court.
Gotcha, yeah, fair enough. Yeah, I do support greater levels of intensification in Taronga. I think the question is how high and where? I think a big problem with some of this current intensification, i.e. 22 metres at the mount, is that our residents have felt like they haven't been listened to and things have gone ahead without reflecting that community voice. I think that's a massive problem and goes against what a councillor fundamentally is, which is a public servant that listens to us and tries to find solutions that are indicative and reflective of everybody. So to answer the question, yes, I do support intensification, it needs to happen. But we need to consult more with our community and find a solution, find a number that people are happy with to move our city forward.
Yeah, we've got a button from Adrian.
Thanks a lot. Yes, I support intensification, but it has to be well managed. Plan Change 33 is on one of my top five issues because it's something people are fearful of. And I think the commissioners would even admit that they have done a bad sell job on this. But remember, it is a central government legislation.
Directive.
Directive legislation to assist councils to be able to intensify so that we can house people. Technically, I'm not very keen about that happening down in the mount. I see that as an iconic area, you know, kind of crown in the jewel in the crown, I guess. And getting in and out of there is a nightmare now. So to put some high rises in there is not going to help anybody. Thanks.
And just for those who are wondering what 22 metres is, that is a six-storey building. So it does get confusing when you see metres in the district plan, but we equate to things as stories. So.
Yeah, we've had a 12-storey signed off in the mount, so of late.
Yep, yeah.
To add confusion to the confusion.
Oh yes. Rick? Yeah, the next.
B for Bravo. Aotearoa New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. Studies have shown that diverse and inclusive societies both increase wellbeing and economic growth. How would you actively improve Taronga manas sense and celebration of its diverse society?
Yes, diversity certainly adds vibrancy to the community and we need to enhance that because when you go to countries where they have got big diversity and larger populations, they're exciting. You come back to New Zealand, it's a bit of a retirement village. But so I think the council, the main role would be not to put barriers in place. So when we have sort of events etcetera to support the celebration of diversity, that they could be cost barriers and other resources that might not be affordable. So provide whatever council can provide in terms of what it has to support events and other facilities perhaps that the diverse community might need.
How many buttons have you used?
One.
Perfect. Jump in. I wasn't sure because I know you only just had one just a moment ago as well.
I know, well, it's two in a row that are interesting to talk about. I think that the people of Taronga have got to consider this and the people that they're going to choose to be on their council. To be fair, it's been a fairly one look kind of council for a really long time. And it's not about us to talk about kind of diversity because we've done our job. We're looking pretty diverse up here. It's up to the voters in this election to really think about diversity on their council and what they need to be looking for. Thanks.
Yep, yeah, grab Adrian or Kim's mic because your one's too quiet. Yeah, that keeps coming up on there. Your mic is the one that I keep having people messaging me saying, "Turn up the volume," and I can only go so high.
Hi, I would like to add my comments to this question and suggest that we've always had a diverse community here in Taronga and here in New Zealand, but we haven't always celebrated that. And that's what I'm looking to improve on. And I think the way to actively improve on that sense of celebration is to get to know the people in your community and go to them and ask them, you know, what is important to them so that we can celebrate with authenticity and a genuine, with a genuineness. That means that our relationships that we will create will be enduring and we will all benefit from that.
Okay, next up Anthony. Now, is that a magic date in the calendar that we work? No, it's not in the voting calendar. 15th's not a magic number to think about.
K for Kilo. In regards to the Plan 33 change for residential density around the city, where do you stand on the changes?
Well, that's it. The changes that have been provided to us, it's a very fucking hard thing to say. Like, I support building high rises, just not down the mount. You know, the mount is a tight spot as it is. So in Taronga, I'd say do it. It's the only way we're going to get people in there because actually I was there last week and there was no one there. It is a very derelict, unhappy place. And bringing more people in there, having high rises, if people will be there, you know, just not down the mount. You know, we need to be listening to people and we haven't, you know. So going forward, needs to be a public vote on any of this sort of stuff. So that's where I stand.
Okay, Jerome, what box number? And for those at home, it's 27. You know exactly what I said. Did you just grab 22? Thanks for checking up on that because I can't see the numbers from here. I know, and I'm cleared for truck driving without glasses and quite a few bit down the eye chart, so yeah. Yes, but you know, the font size is 12 on there.
Fair call, fair call.
Or 14 or so, or it might be 20, but you know, it's not 50.
All right. P, well, we'll go.
For Papa.
All right, Papa, there we are.
Yeah, P for Papa Ma, yeah.
If you are elected into council, will you support the Taronga Commissioners' strategy, direction and long-term plan? Yes or no?
Oh, can I take the money at this point?
You can take the money.
So, 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 how many, so we'll take three years' salary for us and we'll donate tits and develop for the 2025 campaign?
Yeah, no, the answer's no. I'm based. When the last elections were happening, one of the commissioners, I think it was Antolly, said, "We couldn't have democracy yet because there were projects they needed to push through." That tells me projects the people wouldn't want. I can't support that. Look, there's two really important numbers here. 10-year plan, 164% rate increase. Hands up if you like that idea.
Over 10 years.
Over 10, yeah. Budget blowout to $3 billion. No, thank God 10-year plans get reviewed every three years and we need to look at that a lot earlier. And we need to look at it with our ears fairly attuned to the residents.
And we have a button from Rick and followed by a button from Sarah Jane.
Thank you, I'd just like to follow on from Jerome Vanderbeek in terms of the 10-year plan and affordability. Ran out of time in my introduction, so I'll finish here. So the 146%, 64%, whatever the figure is, equates to an average home in Taronga paying $10,000 in rates by the end of the 10 years. On year 10, the average home will be paying $10,000 a year in rates. That's just for the TCC rates. Then on top of that, there's another $1,000 will be going to the regional council. That's $11,000. How will people afford that? So that's all I need to add to that, affordability. Think about that number and think about, you know, will our wages go up adequately to cover that? And will people, could they afford to pay their rent? Because renters will pay that because the landlords will put their rent up to cover that cost. Thank you.
And Sarah Jane.
Look, I believe the commissioners have been the circuit break that Taronga needed. Taronga was stagnant for 20 years. They've laid a solid foundation for the next and future councils to build on.
Now, just before we proceed, I want to ask a question here. Rates, are your regional council rates included in your city council rates bill or they come separate? Okay, that is different from Wellington. Our, ours come in the same, on the same bill statement. So a lot of people don't even know we have a great Wellington Regional Council.
They do, they did until about three years ago. Now they've been separated to add that transparency to the rate payer that there is another council there and they charge.
And hopefully that gets a little bit more transparency on the councils.
That's right. Currently it's about $600.
Yeah, we've already used two buttons on there and we normally limited the two, so. Yeah, okay, let's go rogue and let's.
This could be a little bit rogue on the rates. I was looking through the LTP, I just love 492 pages of it, and I did a bit of girl math, okay? Girl math. So my weekly rates are $57 a week. An 8% rise this year makes it $4.56 next rise.
Can you zoom right in on that rate, please?
That's half, that's half a Lotto ticket, everyone. The following year cumulatively, there'll be $61.56, 13% rise for the following year. That's $8, that's two thirds of a Lotto ticket. $69.56, 10% the following year, that's $6.95, again, a third of a Lotto ticket. And so on and so forth.
Not $10,000.
So that's what we call girl math, everybody, just so that everyone's straight on that. So, yeah, so I'm just like, I'm just a pretty basic girl, but that's my rates and that's what it's going to cost. And if it costs half a Lotto ticket, two thirds of a Lotto ticket for me to have a beautiful city to live in, things to drive on, places to go, to take my visitors, for my children to move down here eventually, then I'm good with that. So I'm sorry if I got my girl math wrong, but those are the rate increases that were mooted and I've averaged them out and they do include the IFF fund.
And just before, which type of Lotto ticket are you buying? Because I.
I don't, I don't buy Lotto ticket, my dad was a gambler, let's not go there.
Because I normally buy $18.
All right, so a cup of coffee and half a scone, then a cup of coffee and a scone. So that's my jam.
Can we just have a little bit of a fact check? Because I watched last night and you allowed John Robson to fact check without using a button. So can we just discuss as a group the difference between a 164% increase of something and something being 164% of itself? It is a different term. It is factually incorrect to state that it is a 164% rate increase. It is a 64% rate increase, which will be 164% of what you're currently paying. Can we just clarify that?
I love that. Thank you for that.
So another bit of girl math there for you people. Thank you very much.
It's all good. It's out about, it's making the voter more aware of the facts and this is something I, you know, we love because.
Misinformation's terrible and that's one thing you can, you can call me whatever you want to, but I don't like misinformation. I don't like the facts being misrepresented.
Emotional.
You can get bogged down in the percentages, but when you actually look at the dollar value, it's generally not as scary as it sounds.
And for context, if you want it, you can compare it to Chubba Chubba lollipops. They cost about 69 cents each. Yes, if you watch the One News article back in March about the small business owner getting free Chubba Chubba taster, that was me. Yeah. Okay, now we, it was Jerome, was it you? Yep, so then it will be Andrea. Yeah. Okay, now we, it was Jerome, was it you? Yep. So then it will be Andrea.
E for Echo. International studies have shown that an active appreciation of diversity boosts both positive wellbeing and economic growth. Some might argue Taoranga City has in past overly represented a specific demographic. How would you ensure Taoranga City Council actively reflects our whole society?
So which candidate would you like to defer your question to? And you're welcome to defer it to someone who's not here as well, who's not here today, if you really want to be cheeky.
I'd like to defer this question to Jerome Vanderbeek, please.
Oh, that's, grab your microphone.
I'm actually reading the question again.
Fair enough.
I'll read it for you.
Oh, I'm reading it.
You got it, you got it?
Wow, I'm intrigued to know why it's been deferred to me to be in all honesty. Perhaps I. Or perhaps to look at, I reflect a specific demographic, who knows? Well, you lead by example. When you're a councillor, you are in a leadership position. People get to see you. I love diversity. It's the values I would bring to the council. And then hopefully the council's values will permeate out to the community, right? Trying to force something just gets people's backs up. You lead, right? You encourage events that demonstrate the diversity of our city, right? I think we're all inclusive, to be honest, right? We're all inclusive. I love to go to events of, my ex-partner was Brazilian, you went to Brazilian events. I've been to a couple of the international, forget the term, but there's an organisation for immigrants. It's colour. Why would we be scared of colour, right? It's colour. It's who we are, all of us together. And the countdown's happening, so I better sit down.
Okay, Teresa, what box number?
Is box number one gone?
Yes, it has.
No, I'll settle for two.
It's gone.
Oh.
This is the lowest one.
No, just whatever that is.
I like it.
Very easygoing.
And what box number was it next, for those at home?
Three.
Six. Oh, no. Oh, no. Yeah, it might be funny.
S for Santa. If you are elected as a councillor, will you decelerate council spending on unwanted grand projects and concentrate on vital necessary infrastructure needs such as roading?
Okay, this is, this is quite a hard question to answer, but I would definitely take a deep dive into the grand projects as people are referring to, sort of the three that I've referred to as the grand projects. And if some are, we don't know where they are and if they are past the point of no return, if the council or the Commissioners have already committed money. So we need to take a deep dive into that and probably a very quick line-by-line investigation of, and to identify any cost savings if they've gone ahead. I think a good balance is required. I mean, there's no point, as I said previously, having the best roads in the country and the best housing, great businesses. Where do people go on the weekends if you've just got a nice road? Like, oh, let's go and drive in a nice road and then another nice road. But where are we going? Oh, can we go to the pool, mum? Can we go to the museum? Oh, no, no, we don't do that, love. Let me show you another nice road. You know, that's, that's the sort of thing. It doesn't make sense. So what I'm saying here is you need to balance the needs of a growing city with the community. So ensure that everybody's getting a little bit of the pie. So, yep. Yeah, hopefully we can identify savings and balance the scales.
And button.
That was a huge.
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, you're only allowed to.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're about to stand up again with the box number. Oh, are you putting your button? Right, okay, so Rick's going to put in a button before Adrian stands back up again. Oh, you, you get to choose the next box, but Rick's buttoned on first.
So if I can just use this button, because we are on the discussion around the 10-year plan. And if I can get my problems sorted. So if we look at, at page 279 of the Long-Term Plan, for you of those at home who might be able to find it, we have figures. Currently, the rate requirement is 291 million this year. That is going to climb, according to the data on that page, to 769 million, 769 million. That's scary. So you do the percentages at home and by, you'll take off that, the effect on the rate payer, you've got to take off growth. In the next 10 years, we'll have so many more new houses and they share, they share that burden and that cumulatively is 17.5%. So after growth, the increase is 146%. But then there's also inflation and inflation cumulatively, according to the LTP, is 21%. So.
And I think that's a good way of describing it is grabbing in more customers, which increases the number of people paying into the rates pool is a good thing. Some people sit there and consider the increased dollar value for more people paying in as a bad thing to try and scaremonger. So thanks for actually pointing out the positive aspect. There's more people paying in is actually a good thing. Yeah.
Even though that's drive cost.
Yes, yeah. Okay, Adrian, what box number?
28, lucky last.
Good, we've got it. I was nervous there.
I for Indigo. Do you wish to promote or delay public transport measures for Taoranga?
I do not wish to delay public transport initiatives for Taoranga. I think it's critical that we get to work on public transport. Interesting. I'm trying to figure out how I can use GoBus. You know, I posted something on Facebook to say, you know, hold caller. I'm going to have a go at using GoBus. So I haven't quite figured it out. So I'm getting there. But our big buses, you know, they're empty. We have to relook at that. We have to. Nobody's mentioned the congestion charges that have been suggested for the city. That's something that the new council is going to have a look at. But we do have to do something about our transport. We just have to ease things up on our, on our roads. And I think that it was a great point made about buses, school buses. You know, we have to figure that out. There are ways. There's a lot of, there's a bit of anti about the ferry from Pilot Bay to the city. We're going to give that a go. It's a public-private kind of, kind of thing. And getting cars off Hewlett Road if it works. Thank you.
Okay, and we have got one minute to our mid-time break and I doubt that we're going to be able to get nine answers in 11 seconds each. So we're going to take a quick break and we'll see you back in 10 minutes' time for hard-hitting questions. Okay, and welcome back to It's in the Ballot. Now let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. Okay, so hard-hitting questions are the questions here that we get every candidate to sit there and answer. So you cannot use your button cards or your defer cards. And so we'll kick off with hard-hitting question number one. Do you support the Taoranga City Council's Long-Term Plan? And I'll just get to my random order sheet. Adrian, you get to go first.
Thank you very much. This is the Long-Term Plan, 492 pages. There are 46 projects inside this Long-Term Plan. The work in this plan is phenomenal when you talk staff time, councillors' time. There is one candidate, I think, in another ward who wants to throw this out and start again. Now, that is terrifying to me because I think that's going to be a long, drawn-out process to rewrite this plan. There's some great things in here. There's some not good things in here. And the new council, that's the first thing they've got to do, remembering the person you choose has got to have a strong voice because they're going to be one of 10 and they're going to have one vote. So the person that you choose is going to have to know what to do with this plan and I would not be throwing it out. That is absolutely a no. Because we don't want to be in the same situation where we've got a brand-new council and they decide to throw this out. So then the government's thinking, holy moly, did they not learn anything? Thank you.
Okay, Rick.
No, I certainly wouldn't throw it out, but you can amend 10-year plans. It is a plan, just a plan. It's not a budget which happens each year in terms of the requirement to do so, to strike the rate, to how much to tax the people. An annual plan does its job. The 10-year plan just looks forward to establish what projects we need to do or initiatives or whatever and space them out over 10 years to, to, to know that you're heading in the right direction. So the idea would be to amend it. When this plan went out for consultation, it was earlier than other councils because of this Commissioner going and the election. When they went out for consultation compared to what they finally adopted, the rates number was 50% more than they went out for consultation. That's significant and that needs reconsideration by the new council. So part of that was the Three Waters got chucked out. So 20% of that 50% extra that they went, that they finally adopted was that water cost. So bear that in mind, but still they should have factored that in. But to deliver a plan 50% more than coming out for consultation is not acceptable.
Okay, Jerome.
Okay, I think I actually answered this question earlier on with one of my box choices. I should have got somebody else to choose the boxes for me because I did a lousy job. I got fact-checked on my numbers. And I'm not saying the other person's wrong or I'm right, but what I'm suggesting is perhaps there's conflicting information written. And that would suggest to me, we do need to go through the Long-Term Plan if there is conflicting information. Personally, I think if it was only 64% increase, we're struggling to keep up with inflation. Throw in the book out, well, look, that's ludicrous. I agree with that completely. Going through it, definitely. Rick, you're on council every three years. The 10-year plan's reviewed, right? It's got to be reviewed. The book, the 400 odd pages is the starting point. But as a yes/no question, do I support the Long-Term Plan? The answer is no, as it's written in its entirety. But new council needs to go through it. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony.
Do I support the Taoranga City Long-Term Plan? Yes and no. Like, there's some good information in there, but it needs to be modified to suit what we're doing right now. There's some massive dollar values in these projects and I know the cost of a dollar and everyone's minutes the same time, you know, like, we need to be going out there. We need to change what the term plan is, but it still needs to happen. You know, we've got to have a long-term plan and there's no point going in blind like people think we're doing. There has to be a plan. We're going to follow some sort of plan, but we just need to modify what is there. Otherwise, we're just going to go down the rabbit hole of just wasting money, you know? And that seems to be what we've done so far. So let's not change it. Yeah, cheers.
Okay, Teresa.
Yeah, I think this question is a very black and white question and I don't think we live in the black and white. We live in the grey. Now, that might sound a bit waffly, but parts of it we support and parts of it we don't, well, we don't support. But I think what we're saying when we don't support it is let's have a good look at it, like everybody said. You know, but we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to be relatively speedy about it, you know? Not waffle around and, oh, what does everyone think? We need to get probably some really good financial gurus in there, hopefully one of us. But, you know, it'll need really high level, a quick look at, decide which projects we're going to proceed or not proceed with, and then also decide which ones we can find some cost effectiveness. But there are some good things in there as well as not so good. What I think is a good thing? Yep. So what I think is that, you know, things like the cancellation of the increased sports fees for the field charges. You know, we don't want a society where only rich, rich kids can go and play soccer. So they listened to that and they reversed it. Now, you never hear about the good things that sometimes the Commissioners or the council do. But I will not live in a society where you can't afford to go and play sport and the poorer societies will be disadvantaged.
Next up, Andrea.
Hi, I do support the Taoranga City Plan as it, as it is at this point. But I actually recognise and understand that one of my key roles if I'm elected to council is to undertake our due diligence and review the decisions that are going to impact us next and continue on a schedule of review so we understand as a council exactly what's required of this plan. And together, we can ensure that the plan that we move forward is a plan that's appropriate for our community.
Okay, Harris.
Yeah, a great answer, by the way. I do support the Long-Term Plan, but we, we need to be more transparent as councillors. We need to be active in our community, showing you here are the projects that are on the table, what the cost is going to be to you, what benefits are you going to get from it? And more importantly, what do you think about these proposed projects for, to bring our city forward? We need to do a better job of that and we need active, engaged, passionate councillors that genuinely care about our community and want to do the best by our community. So yes, I support it, but we need to do a better job of engaging our community and coming up with solutions that are representative of all our voices. Thank you.
Okay, Kim.
Yeah, what Harris said, I feel like you, you took my answer. So it's because we're both young, we stand for the same things. I, there's some things in the Long-Term Plan that I don't think were well consulted on and those are issues that are sitting festering in our community. And the first thing that our councillors will need to do once they're inducted is to go out and speak with the community about those festering issues. And then I think probably the right thing to do, and we definitely can't throw it out because there is so much work that is involved in that plan, as Andrea said, sorry, Adrian said, is that we will need to prioritise how the big spends and the smaller spends impact our communities. And I think that looks like maybe a committee, because council has committees that are set up, that looks at how we can address how the projects impact our wellbeing. And I think that every single decision that comes across the council table should be looking at the impact for our community. Also the impact on our environment, how things cost, how much things cost and when they need to be implemented. And I'd like to see a committee set up that really looks at how well these projects are going to improve our communities' outcomes.
Sarah Jane.
So yes and no. As I said earlier, I believe the Commissioners have been the circuit breaker that Taoranga needed. We've been stagnant for 20 years and it is fantastic that there are projects in there to get our city and our communities moving into the future. Any suggestion of throwing out the LTP is absolutely ludicrous. I've just gone through one with Mata Mata Piako District Council. The time and effort put into it by staff and councillors is enormous. So any suggestion of doing that before the next Long-Term Plan is due is just ludicrous. So within the six months of the new council being elected, they will be putting together an, sorry, an annual plan. So that is definitely the perfect time to start looking at prioritising a lot of those projects within the LTP and building on that foundation that the Commissioners have set.
Okay, now we'll get over to hard-hitting question number two. How will you support mental health? How will you support mental health services for youth in our area? Okay, Anthony Ray hit Y on the chi-rongs, not HH2. Okay, Rick, you get to go first.
I think social media has a lot to answer for in terms of mental health around youth. We all like to compare ourselves against others. And unfortunately, what you get on social media is you see a whole lot of people that are happy and having a great life and comparing and you think yours isn't so good. And so, you know, that's a sad aspect of social media, it certainly has got its negatives. So I think events and other initiatives to enhance social connections, you know, that's what it's about. It's about having our youth having a sense of belonging to something. If they're at home and they're in front of their phones, it's just not healthy. I'm not sure what council can do about that. We can ensure that we have good active facilities, reserves and other facilities that if they can get out of their bedroom and their phone and get out there and do something active, that is essential for their mental health. Other things are central government.
Jerome?
Okay, mental health services. Oh, microphone.
Yes, I'm asleep at the wheel.
That's true. The end of the day, that's a central government role. They have a budget for that, councils don't. However, council needs to come on board and support as much as they can initiatives. Now, that's the ambulance at the bottom of the cliff. As members of society, we need to portray our values to everybody, including those suffering mental health. As a councillor, we can lead with our values. We need to show the whole community you're inclusive, right? We need to help people and it's not a council role alone. We need to show everybody you're part of our community, right? And that's a challenge, I think, for every single one of us here. As a councillor, we possibly can lead that a bit. But as a yes or no, it is really a central government role. We need to support them where council can, but that's really where the responsibility lies. Thank you.
Okay. Harris?
Great, this is one I'm really passionate about. I don't see a counselling facility as a mental health service. I also see, as much, sorry, I do see that as a mental health service. But what I also do see is a sports club as a mental health service. Why? Because what do our young people need? They need a sense of belonging, a sense to connect with people and they need a purpose. And as council, we need to support these initiatives, we need to support our sports clubs, we need to create more places and spaces for recreation like skate parks so kids can get out after school and not be on their phones and go play with their friends. We need to support our culture and arts. Not everyone plays sport, but they love to paint, they love to sing. We need the places and spaces, we need to really incentivise these things. There's also some great work that's been happening on the local level. I was just at the Historic Village the other week with a few other people here at Arataki and they're doing the most amazing work with our youth. And their voices aren't heard, they're not supported. And as councillors, we need to put our hands up collectively as a group and say, "We need to help make a difference and what can we do?"
Perfect. Theresa?
Thank you. I think, yes, it is a central government thing, but I think in the first instance for a council, we can get involved with local groups and services and fully understand the challenges that they face. They might be lesser or greater depending on which ward you're representing, so it will be different across the city. And there are many great charity organisations like, just for example, Kids Need Dads. Reach out and ask them and, you know, just use your own initiative as a councillor. "How can I help?", even if it's just using my profile or the council collectively using their own profiles to raise awareness of the particular groups. So, yes, I think we can help a little bit as a council and don't be afraid to knock on the door of some of the larger companies and ask them for some dollars. Just use our profiles.
Okay, Anthony?
Yeah, look, we need to promote mental health awareness in the community. Like, I was down at Arataki Skate Park and I'm not saying you've got to get out there, get skateboarding and that, but I found unsafe down there, there was four guys, they were drinking heavily down there. There was a woman passed out on the grass, there was Tent City around the corner from there. You know, that's their mental health that they're dealing with. You know, like, it's no longer sticks and stones will break your bones, it's names will fuck you up. That's just what it is now. Like, people, they just need to be aware of what people are saying and how we're saying it because it affects people down the line, you know? So it's got to start with us and then we've got to help the community in becoming better and showing it that, you know, mental health is a massive thing here, you know? We don't want kids hanging from trees. That's not what we want, you know? We want everyone to grow up and be strong and it's just not there, you know? So we can only help where we can help and pour money into what it is, that is it.
Okay, Sarah Jane?
This is an issue that's really close to my heart. And while it is, mental health is really a central government issue. Under Section 10 of the Local Government Act, local government needs to provide for the wellbeing of communities. And we can do that by improving the provision of recreational and social infrastructure. We can also do that by linking with the likes of the Graham Dingle Foundation and providing the support that organisations that are helping our youth. Whether, as Theresa said, it's knocking on those businesses' doors using our profiles. Council obviously has a limited funding pool, but there are other ways that we can provide support to organisations.
Okay, Kim?
I thought a lot about this. Mental health is also an issue that is close to my heart. As someone who works in environment, I see youth day-to-day dealing with things that we just didn't have growing up. They're worried about the future, they're worried about climate change, they're worried about the air quality, being able to swim in the rivers. So I think it is really critical. That is a core issue. And again, it comes back to what I was saying before about looking at our spend with a lens of wellbeing and that's across the different groups in our society, but particularly for youth. I'd be really interested in looking at some additional levers we might be able to pull. As Harris mentioned, sport is really important, so is access to additional facilities within our community, art galleries, all sorts of things that add to improve our mental health. So could we look at things like reducing fees, making things free for people that are struggling with their mental health if they are under service or part of an organisation or even if they're not in some way? Could look like a referral. I just think there could be additional things and that's what that strategic committee could look like in council is looking and exploring different levers, partnerships that might not be necessary.
Adrian?
Thank you. This is a really, really important question because, you know, this is our future we're dealing with and we already know that there's so much going on with youth and, you know, mental health kind of issues. So the council, I agree with everybody, can provide facilities. The good news is that the council does have a youth development, obviously, kind of department or people that are doing that kind of work. I was a city councillor for Havlock North in Hawkes Bay from 2013 to 2017. And we did a lot of work with youth around arts and culture. We had a committee getting people in. We ran a lot of kind of events that were targeted at youth. And we did have, you know, kind of youth councillors who came in and we did a lot of work there. So we did know and we will all know, the person you choose will know the providers within our communities who are working with youth. And also, those not-for-profit organisations or people looking for funding will come to the council. And as a councillor, we have to be aware of where we need to invest and how we can help those organisations filled with volunteers. Thanks.
Okay, Andrea?
Hi, mental health is real and it's experienced in many ways. And I certainly have first-hand experience in dealing with youth with mental health issues. I believe it's all of our issue. I'm not a fan of deferring to central government or anywhere else. I think as a community together, we can find the solutions. And I think they do start at home and that's possibly one of the key reasons for some concerning mental health. What we've got is examples in the Arataki Ward of where the council actively worked together with community groups to fund services at Hartford Ed, for example. And finally, I do recognise that there is a bigger role for the central government, but I prefer that our community takes responsibility for our own. We work together to ensure that we're resourcing the opportunities that are needed for youth mental health.
Okay. And let's hit for hard-hitting question number three. How will you support youth leadership and civics engagement programmes? And let's kick off with Jerome. Get to go first.
Right, well, that's definitely not a question we were given to hear on.
Okay, I'm going to, your microphone would be helpful.
Phone again. How will you support youth leadership and civic engagement programmes? Well, this definitely ties in as part two to the mental health, doesn't it? It's letting people know they're a part of it. We have a role to provide the facilities, facilitate the ideas that come to us for council to assist with it. Supporting youth leadership and civic engagement, I think it goes back a step to the parents. If the parents are engaged, then the kids probably are engaged. So we need to look at a little bit wider at the segment of community that doesn't feel engaged. And when they start to feel engaged, their kids will feel engaged. So it's a little bit bigger step in my view. But kids that want to be involved, definitely. And I'd like the ideas to come from the kids because I'm an old fart in their eyes. I'd like the ideas to come from them. What do you want? Okay, that's where I'm at.
Okay, Kim?
Yeah, one of the things I think is really important is that we have a team of councillors sitting at the table who are relatable and who young people can see, who are visible. And I think that's something we can do by electing people who are relatable. In terms of specific levers within the council's mandate, I know they've had a youth council in the past. My understanding was that it wasn't particularly effective because it was held in council chambers and it didn't work really well. We had a conversation about that on Wednesday with some people that work in youth who were down at the Historic Village. And so I think the logical answer is to go out into the community and meet people where they're at, have conversations in their domain where they feel comfortable and be educated by them.
Okay. Anthony?
Okay, so we need a, I think, this is what it is. Yeah, there's a lot of I-things going around, but everyone should be saying, "I know it." We need to fund projects that are initiated by the youth, you know? We need to make them, it's their law, you know? They're the ones who are going to look after it and they're the ones who are going to progress with it and that's what we need to be backing. Now, there's no point just being like, "You guys do this, you guys do that", that's not going to help anyone. They need the ones that come up with the ideas and we need to fund that. You know, that's the way I see it should be going and that's what we should be doing. So, that's your responsibility, you know? That's it. Cheers.
Okay, Sarah Jane?
We have got some incredible young leaders in our communities. So I would love to see a youth council reinstated in Toorongar City. Our neighbours in Rotorua Council have had great success for it. Mayor Tapso and Councillor Wang are two proteges of that youth council. And as Kim did say, having it in chambers doesn't necessarily work. So we do definitely need to be going out into the community, out into the schools. It's pointless to expect people to keep coming to us. We need to go to them to hear their voice.
Okay, Theresa?
Sarah just said everything I was going to say as well. I absolutely agree with the youth council and I was reading up about Rotorua City Council and in particular, Mayor Tony Tapso is a mentor, you know, there's a whole lot online you can read. She mentors a young lady who looks amazing. We've got amazing ladies and gentlemen or kids, I suppose, in Toorongar as well. So yeah, let's find them and let's ask them what they want us to do and let's do it. Let's just, you know, put our money where our mouth is.
Okay. Rick?
I think a youth council needs to be representative of those who are probably in more need of assistance than those who probably don't require that much support. But what happens in a council, a youth council, is quite often you get the kids from the more well-to-do schools whose parents are happy and can give them the opportunities. And this country's getting a bit like that, isn't it? That disparity. So I think the focus needs to be those of lesser means to make it a nice, effective council in terms of its decision-making, youth council I'm talking about. And so, that would be the aim. And also for that council to deliver outputs rather than just talk. You know, we need them to walk the talk. It's actions, not words. And so, there needs to be a lot of thought put into the development of that youth council. But boy, if you can get it to work, it would be great.
Okay. Andrea?
Hi, I'd like to absolutely support youth civic engagement and that's by ensuring we make it relevant to them. And to make it relevant, we need to hear from them. You know, my daughter who's eligible to vote, she says, "Well, it's not relevant to me, mum. It doesn't come across my social media." It's because we're not attaching the things that matter to them to the council and what we can do in council. So there's an education piece, but most importantly, it's making it relevant to the youth.
Okay, Adrian?
The good news is in central government, we have a Ministry of Youth Development that has their own minister. That's the Honourable Matt Doucet at the minute, who is actually the Minister of Mental Health, which has never been put in place before. So feeling optimistic about all that and hopefully the new council will be working closely with central government and will be getting some sort of crossover pollination on that. As a Havlock North City councillor, we did have a Hastings youth committee in our council in Hastings. I didn't have much to do with them because I was on other committees, but they did have a councillor who was assigned to that committee. So they got their own kind of staff support. They had a councillor who came back to the table and reported to us, you know, every couple of months on the projects they were working on and what they were looking at. And I am 100% crystal clear that Toorongar City Council needs to make that happen. Thanks.
Okay, Harris?
Thanks. To support a youth leadership and gain engagement, we need to inspire. We really need to inspire. These kids need to feel like they're looking up to somebody that espouses the same ideas they do, that are passionate about the same things they are. And we need a councillor that is active, boots on the ground in our community, really engaging and asking questions, "What do you care about? How can we make change happen that is important to you?" I don't want to be a councillor that gets elected and then lock myself in an office and never seen again for four years. I want to be actively engaged in Arataki, be it at our sports clubs, our community meals on Tuesdays, sport and arts with the surfers at the beach, engaging with rangatahi and saying, "What is important to you? What are the issues that matter?", using my platform to promote messages on social media in person that really activate engagement and make youth want to stand up and have their voices heard. So that's really what I believe about that. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Okay, now we get to the, shall we say, I'd say near the end of the show, the closing statements. And each candidate will get one minute on why they should get your number-one preference vote, Arataki voters. And let's kick off with Anthony.
Number one, um, like I'm deep, I'm deeply committed, guys, into ensuring that every voice is heard and every concern is addressed. Like, there's no point going out there promising shit that we're not going to deliver on. You know, I'm going to be that honest voice. And you probably hear the way I do speak is that I do speak honestly and I do swear. You know, it is, it is what it is. You know, like this, this debate it's probably turned into, rather than just random questions, like, we've got to look beyond this, you know? We've got to be coming in there. We've all got to be as one, and we have to listen and we've got to be transparent with it. That's the only way we're going to shape Tooronga to be a better city than it is right now. Yeah, cheers.
Okay, next up, Harris.
Thanks, yeah. So I really appreciate everyone coming here today to listen. Um, I want to close by saying uh, that our council needs change. We do need uh, young, fresh faces at the table uh, to represent a diversity of thought and opinion. Um, you listened to the hard-hitting questions at uh, the end of this meet, and it all involved our youth. Uh, as a, uh, one with the long-term plan and two for our youth. So it's about our youth. It's about the next generation coming through and creating a city that we can all be proud of and pass down. We want to leave this place in a better place than we found it, right? Um, and as your elected councillor, I believe I represent that. I think I'm a great balance of youth and commercial experience uh, with my business ventures. Um, I've got a relentless work ethic. Um, and I am genuinely empathetic and care about the people uh, that I represent. Um, and I really want the opportunity to prove that to you with your vote. So thank you.
Okay, Adrian.
Yes, thanks everyone for coming today. Thanks for organising the opportunities. It's been great. Okay, we're coming to the end of a perfect storm. You know, and we can't forget why we got councillors, commissioners put into our city. We're really mindful of that. Now we've got this transition from commissioners to uh, a democratically elected council. So you need to, I appreciate youth and I'm all for it. Um, but you are going to need to think about councillors who will have the courage to be your voice, to stand up for Arataki at the table, to be able to work with other people, to be able to form and, and fit into that team, to actually be able to work with the CEO and the management staff that are there so that we can be moving forward. I think that's really critical. And I think I bring that local government um, experience to the table. I uh, resigned from Havlock Hastings District Council. Uh, I was selected as the National Party candidate for Palmerston North. So I also have some experience and knowledge of uh, central government. And I think this business is so huge, you need to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, Kim.
Start the clock. I was just thinking, I think that what I can offer is, I think that's what I'm supposed to pitch to everybody, um, is that I genuinely care about equity. And I think that that's what we need from our next team of councillors. You do need to have the business acumen. You need to have, I think, some governance experience. Although even if somebody doesn't have governance experience, they probably can learn it. Um, but it's that genuine commitment to work together to build consensus for better outcomes for all people who live here. Um, and I have that. I also genuinely care about the environment. And we haven't even talked about the environment. In fact, there were no questions on the environment today. And that's really, really important um, to me. So I would just ask everybody, please take time to talk to your neighbours, your children, your grandchildren, and ask them to vote. Tell them that this is the most important election and that there are some incredible candidates standing for this ward, other wards, and for mayor. It is the best line-up I have ever seen. And so I'm genuinely happy if some of the people here are elected as well. So vote for your values.
Okay, next up, Jerome.
I've got the mic this time. We need to look forward. We've talked about the commissioners and the rest of it. Now we need to look forward to a democracy. Why would you want me part of it? I'm pragmatic. I can make decisions. I can prioritise. More importantly, I know how to listen. I might have a view, but I'll listen. And you may change my view. I would hope to have been elected, the ability to have clinics where, you know, on a Monday, I'll be at the Arataki Community Hall. No appointments needed. Come and tell me what's on your mind. Come and tell me, especially if you think I'm wrong. I want to know why. I want to represent my neighbours and I want to know what they think. Now, when it comes to prioritising, I'll give you an example recently. I've got a young daughter in Australia. Nothing dramatic, but there's a couple of little things not quite going right in their life. It's right in the middle of the election campaign. I've prioritised my daughter. I'm going to be here for a week in the middle of the campaign. I can prioritise and I know where priorities are.
Next up, Theresa.
Thank you. Um, I'm not going to repeat all the issues from tonight in one minute, but I do want to say, there is a saying, people will forget what you said, but they will remember how you made them feel. So what I want to say is I want you to feel valued and I want you to feel heard. I understand the anxiety about the incoming council, but I personally am laser-focused, as I believe everyone here is tonight, on building a better council. If we build a better council, we will build a better city really easily. Um, I understand the huge financial constraints and the pressures and all the numbers we're talking about today. But this is a growing city and there is lots of hope and positivity as well. So please know that I will work full-time for you um, on the Arataki Ward over the next four years. And I know it'll only be one of 10 votes, but I will ensure that the Arataki voice is heard loud and clear every single meeting. Um, we may not win all the battles, but we will be heard at that table. So um, I say to you all, let's be bold, let's be brave and let's be better. So please trust me with your number one vote. Theresa.
Okay, next up, Andrea.
Hi, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you all once again for coming and, and being our audience today. I want to remind you that I am the right person. This is the right time and I am in the right place to stand for Arataki. I'm the right person because I live here. I'm from here and I will continue to be here. Uh, I'm solutions-focused, but most importantly, and it's something that I think has been underestimated, I am an expert in governance. I have at least five years of recent experience in governance roles. Not everyone, everyone can learn governance, yes. But not everyone is as good at practising governance. And there is a key difference there. So I'm able to work in that space and I'm effective at getting decisions that, that reflect the community. Um, Andrea Webster, your vote for Arataki Ward.
Okay, uh, next up, Sarah Jane.
My connection to Arataki runs deep. Having grown up here for 20 years, I've witnessed its transformation firsthand. I'm committed to making improvements that benefit not just our local communities, but the wider city as well. It is this intimate understanding that fuels my drive to provide the leadership Tooronga needs to move forward. As we navigate the challenges of a rising cost of living and rapidly growing communities, our council needs experienced governance more than ever. With my background as a councillor for the Matamata Piako District and my strong knowledge of local government, I am equipped to help navigate us through this transition. I have recently moved back to the bay to represent you and Arataki. I am here to serve, to lead and to ensure that our cities tomorrow is brighter than today. Vote for vision, vote for experience, vote for a future where every member of our community thrives. Vote Born for Arataki.
Okay, and Rick.
Um, I want you guys to vote for me because as a couple of other speakers have said, they have experience. So I equally have experience. And I, I think that's critical in terms of the challenges that we've got ahead. It's, it's great to have new faces in there. And boy, there's a good line-up of new faces. I, I can't take that away from you guys. Just, I'm amazed at how Arataki Ward has delivered so many great candidates. But so, so moving forward, I know there can be rough and tumble in, in the council chamber. But when we walk out of that chamber and there's a councillors lounge right through that door, we go through that door and we respect each other and we remain collegial. Because that's critical. I've been on a council in the past, it was dysfunctional. They didn't get kicked out. But you get an A and a B team and, and if A votes white, the B team votes black. It was that horrible. And so you can imagine the decisions, the bad decisions that were made when you've got, you know, psyche in that, in that space. And it's not a good space, but we got through it. We had no intervention on central government. So thank you to everyone for arranging today. It's been a, a good event and um, we look forward to the results. Thank you.
And thank you for that, for candidates. So for those who are wondering how things work with here, uh, voting system is STV, which is Single Transferable Vote. Whoever becomes the councillor for Arataki Ward will have, after the distribution of all the votes, 50% of the vote plus one. So make sure you go out there, not just rank your first preference, but rank down the list of who you'd like to be as your candidates as you go through that list there. Because, you know, second, third, fourth, fifth preference votes are going to be what's going to decide the selection, not just your number one preference vote. Now, can I say thank you to all the candidates who have uh, come out here today? It's uh, very brave as I think all of you here are first-time, it's in the ballot, um, participants. It's um, not easy, especially considering when you're staying for council, suddenly you have a, a bunch of video cameras thrown in front of you at the same time. Uh, but thank you for taking this opportunity. And it'll help those who cannot come down to these meetings can sit there and watch this at a later date. Uh, can I also sit there and thanks Ian, Nick and Ray for being in the studio in here, keeping things afloat uh, and making this show going. And then thank you for the clap machine that suddenly started working suddenly again. Now, for those who are wondering, uh, back here at 4pm, uh, Nick will be uh, hosting the, uh, was it? Now, have you, now, it's Mount Mokonui, how do you say the Maori name for the? Moa? Moao? Okay. Yeah, okay, yeah. It's always been, it was one of the ones that was sticking in my head. How do I say it? Yes, and um, yes, Google was very interesting mixing up that with, um, was it Matau? Ojimutai? Yeah, yeah. Actually, I thought the Napa, Napa wards as well, with Boliacye in the middle. Um, yes, so Nick will be back here at there and then back at 7pm tonight. I'll be back uh, doing the Papamoa Ward for tonight. So it's uh, going to be a bit of a long day in here, but it's uh, a lot of fun. So let's uh, see you all back here at 4pm and yet see all these fantastic candidates back again.
Different ones, different ones.
Different ones, yeah, different ones, yeah.
The rain bars open.